Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Graham Cassoon?
Here.
Tobin?
Here.
Kleiner?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
John Francois?
Here.
Burr?
Yep.
Green?
Yep.
Massey?
Here.
President Rodriguez?
Here.
We have a call.
Approval minutes.
Tonight we have the common council meeting minutes from October 2nd, 2018.
So moved. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, second by Alderman Kleiner, all in favor?
Aye.
Correspondents?
Okay, tonight we have two correspondents, just one from the municipal shelter inspection report from Ag and Marketing.
Received and filed.
And then a second, this is for a class change for a liquor license for 240 Wickham Avenue.
Received and filed.
That is all for correspondents.
For the goodness city, anyone would like to address the-
What do you mean a class change on a liquor license?
They're going from a beer and wine to a lick- full liquor.
You have to go to the planning board.
What did I say to that?
They do.
Absolutely.
Okay. Where was that?
No, 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 you've got in the-
Prime Lord?
What's the business?
In our voting code, we distinguish between eating and drinking, eating and drinking beer, wine, and then eating and drinking full liquor. So the applicant will have to go back to the planning board. It's not something that we can approve here, or not even approve, just acknowledge and receive.
That's what we did.
That's what we did.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, for the goodness city, anyone would like to address the council, please step forward. You have four minutes.
All right, I'm gonna keep this short because I'm trying to see the State of the Union at 9:00 PM. It's crazy how we now have a firefighter who are now a first responder in getting you drugs. I think it's crazy how we have one of the most largest power plants a mile or two away from our schools, polluting our air, our health, and making climate change worse for generations to come instead of using renewable energies. I think it's crazy how the police turn a blind eye to the corruption in local government. I mean, they went after Como's aide, and that got them with corruption, but nothing locally. How do we appoint a council member and give that person that appointed them a pay raise at the last possible moment instead of abstaining? And how do we have elections being won before Elections Day? No wonder only around 5% of Middletown voted. How did we have a father of three who lived here for 30 years supported? I had my spirit broken most of 2018, but then Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez beat the fat cat Joe. Heroes like Alexandria, Elizabeth Warren, Bernie Sanders, the pastor of the Methodist Church here, John McCain, James Comey, and groups like Protect Orange County, Nobody Leaves Mid Hudson, the ACLU, and the Orange County District Attorney's Office have renewed my broken spirit. The people here who are fighting for a driver's license have renewed my spirit. Why aren't we a sanctuary city yet? Thank you, guys.
Hello, everybody. I'm Fredo Pacheco from Nobody Leaves Mid Hudson. Thank you for, you know, giving us this opportunity. The reason I'm here also is for the resolution, you know? We mentioned this like the last meeting that you guys have. And I just want to explain a little bit more about it now so you guys understand the project, right? By signing that resolution, you're gonna give the opportunity to many peoples to be able to drive. People that don't have a social security number. People that have kids, they're gonna take them to different places and they're not gonna be insulated in one place only. The kids are gonna go out and enjoy, you know, take them to football games and plays, something that I don't do with my kids when they were kids. So I'm doing this because I want them to have that opportunity that I don't have. I want them to have that opportunity to drive without fear. And I mean, just thinking of, looking at the facts, I can tell you that the very soft side of this, like the sentimental part, but we also, over the two years, I've been learning that just by issuing a driver's license in the New York State area, it's gonna increase in one-time income of $26 million. Also, every year, like $56 million is gonna have more safety industries. You know, people are gonna have to take a road test and take a driving test just to have a driver's license, right? So the communication between the police and the community is gonna be even better. We can go to many, many examples in other states that have issued driver's license, and it's a win-win situation. We didn't see any lose situation. New Mexico improved the driver's license to people that could get it, and the accidents went low almost by 75%. So I mean, you can see in all those facts, and I mean, people think like that up here in the state, they call it like it is a privilege to drive. I call it like a necessity to survive. So please, just put that in your agenda and try to pass that resolution so we can get the opportunity, and the kids can get the opportunity to have a better, better, enjoyable life, just like being part, you know, making it more part of the community. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address council?
Good evening, my name is Reverend Charles Riew, pastor of St. Paul's United Methodist Church. I'd just like to say in public my support for our move to make New York State a green light state, especially in light of the fact that we as a common council and City of Middletown have voted to provide municipal ID cards, and I guess Rollout Day was supposed to be February 1st. I understand it's immediately around the corner. I'm looking forward to being one of the first ones to get my ID card. But driving a driver's license is also a necessity as the previous speaker spoke. There may be some concerns, but all those concerns has been addressed, and I understand that the bill was already passed lower house long time ago. It's sitting in the senate, and we have a high chance to pass this state senate, and the municipal resolution in support of that will be a very, very powerful sign. If there are any concerns about this negative impact, actually, there was scientific, social scientific studies done right after California adopted this measure, and all the concerns that are raised was abated, and all the positive expectation was fulfilled. And I look forward to safer roads and look for more integrated economic civic life with our citizens brothers who need driver's license. Thank you very much.
Okay, mark the department heads, Economic Development. Any questions for Maria? Thank you, Maria. DPW Commissioner.
Good evening. I'm gonna be very brief again. I'm not gonna update you on the capital projects because the mayor will be doing that, some of them at least, in his briefing next week, the following meeting. I just wanna really call out the DPW guys in there. For the past few weeks, we had extreme weather condition with wind chill about, you know, 20 below zero, and we had sanitation department going out 3 o'clock in the morning picking up garbage. We had the water department working on replacing a new water valves in Highland Avenue as an example. We had the street department going under all kinds of severe conditions in there with the snow and ice, and I do realize this is our job, that's what we're here to do, but it was really extreme and tough. And for that, I just wanna salute them and ask the people to think of them when they are working out there, not only in the City of Middletown, but elsewhere. Again, code enforcement, the same thing, they had to go out and do their job. Wastewater Treatment Plant, we've been very busy working on a very difficult project, which is the screw pumps, replacing them, keeping them going until we get something to replace them. And I wanna call out one person there at the wastewater treatment plant, Kirk Palmer. He really goes beyond the duty all the time. He's there almost like if we need to, 24 hours a day. He's highly technical, very, very skilled labor worker, welder. He's there for us at all times. So I just wanna call him out because he was a key ingredient for the success of putting the one screw pump, basically reviving it, out from the dead. And today, he installed it with some help from the outside, two guys from an outside contractor, and for that, I'm grateful to him as well. And I will conclude my remarks, except if you have any questions.
Thank you, Jacob. Fire Chief.
Good evening. Just to let you know, we had 87 calls for the month of January. We had one structure fire this past weekend up on Aller Avenue. Everything went well, nobody got hurt, everybody got out alive, and the house is salvageable. Any questions about what happened today will be deferred to the mayor. Other than that, any other questions?
Any questions for Fire Chief? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Police Chief.
Good evening. I have nothing this evening unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Police Chief?
Thank you.
Treasure? No. Superintendent Recreation? No. Corporation Counsel, I know he was here, he left?
Who's left?
City Clerk.
I have nothing this evening, if there are any questions.
Question for John? Okay, Mayor?
Yeah, I'd like to begin by echoing Jacob's comments, especially the water department. We had a few water main breaks, and not only to be out plowing in this kind of weather, but to be in a, you know, a six, seven, eight foot hole with water pouring all over you is really above and beyond. I guess what everyone's waiting for is what happened today. We had a very disappointing day here. I was advised by the chief approximately 5:30 this morning that there was a drug raid in progress, that a Middletown Fire Lieutenant, who's also the training officer of the Middletown Fire Department, was arrested, and that a search warrant was being served on the central firehouse in the city. My attended, along with the chief and a couple of the chiefs, the press conference today at the state police barracks, we had an opportunity to have a brief discussion with the state police major. And I think more importantly is, we need to convey our, not only concern about what happened with Lieutenant Smith, and we don't usually talk about personnel matters in public, but I think this is important enough for us to talk about in public, and to let them know that the men and women of the Middletown Fire Department are very dedicated people. The paid staff is comprised of about 26, 27 men. The volunteer staff is a combination of both men and women. This came down as a shock, not only to me personally, but I'm sure to all of you, to the chiefs and to our community. It was hard to comprehend that a person, and it's just an allegation, as we understand, the allegation that a person who is responsible for saving lives and has taken an oath to protect and serve to, who goes out on calls saving people's lives from drug overdoses would be part of, or at the epicenter of, a regional drug ring stretching from Nyack up to Middletown that was supplying narcotics of all different types is, as I mentioned earlier today, beyond comprehension. We're still trying to absorb it, but while we try to absorb it as a community, we must also keep in mind that although this is a punch in the gut, that we still have an outstanding fire department. We also have a dedicated staff of people that are still there protecting our community. We all understand that we're gonna have to step up a little bit to improve that public relations that we have lost right here for a short period of time, that negative perception of the department and of the community, and maybe deserved short-term, but not deserved long-term. I think the negative perception short-term should be addressed to one individual. Some of the media, if you followed it today, gave the impression that the entire Middletown Fire Department was involved in this, and that's not true. There were other firemen involved that were not from the City of Middletown, and there were also, I believe, two retired police officers involved, not from the City of Middletown. But our concern is how the community perceives our department and how the community perceives us moving forward. Some of the social media comments today were very inappropriate, but that's how some people are feeling. So it's our job to rebuild that trust, working with the fire department. So we will, we do have some concerns about the protocols that are in place at the department to, as you know, we have a combination department, both paid and volunteer, and there is pretty, during certain hours, almost unlimited public access into the buildings. We're going to have to look at that, how we're going to control that, because some of the, one of the issues here was that there were actual meetings being held of this gang or motorcycle group, whatever you wanna call them, on city property in our firehouse. Keep in mind that Lieutenant Smith was the shift director. He was the administrator of the shift. He was the boss of the shift. So he actually had more control over what was going on. You would expect that he would be the person to step forward, when in fact, he was allegedly the person who was committing these heinous crimes. So we, we're going to work with the local law enforcement officials as we move forward with our police department. We're gonna look at the protocols that are involved in the fire department, but I think in the short-term, what we also need to do is to let our, the men of the paid department and the men and women of our volunteer department know that we appreciate their service and that we know that this individual's actions are not a reflection on the entire department, and we will move forward, we will get over this, and we will come out of it stronger. Any questions?
Any questions for the mayor? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Remarks of Alderman, Alderman Massey.
Mayor, that was well said, thank you. I actually went down to the firehouse today to reassure the people that are working there that, I can't speak for the entire council, but I certainly spoke for myself, that there's a black eye, but it's one person's black eye. Remember, those people, that's a full department. They work very hard. Let's not paint with one brush the entire department. I can tell you, the other night, in the frigid weather, I got a text from a friend of mine that says, "The fire department was just dispatched right next door to your house." I opened up my bedroom window, and sure enough, there they were. They were out there in the frigid weather, doing their job, just because this one individual, and obviously, he has a right for, to go to court, he has his day in court, but that one individual is not the entire fire department. We have to let the rest of them know, we are still there with them. That goes, Jacob, for your people, I was out to the sewage treatment plant with you, and it was bitterly, bitterly cold, and those guys were out there working, and they do their plowing, they come out for water main breaks, and the police department, the men and the women, when a call goes in, they don't worry about what the weather is, they go out there to protect all of us. Please don't take this one incident and say, "Oh, that's Middletown." And the only advice I gave the gentleman down at the fire department today, I said, "The best you can do is stay off of social media." You idiots out there that think that this is a time to vilify all of Middletown, the hard work that our men and women do, you know what? Grow up. And I said to them, "If you stay off, if you happen to go on, don't answer, because it only perpetuates it." We have a very good city, we look out here, we've got great people. One person does not take the city down. Please, keep your heads up. I do have one little shout-out I wanna give to Orange County Trust, they call it Orange Bank now. They were the first institution with the furloughed people that were willing to give a break, and I think that was a wonderful gesture. I'm hoping that we won't go back into that, but I do appreciate that they stepped up right away. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Tobin?
I agree with the mayor and Alderman Massey. You know, I'm upset what allegedly happened, and I hope if it is true, that they're prosecuted to the full extent of the law. Basically, their job was to serve and protect, and they, yeah, they did it, they kind of, yeah, they're selling drugs, that was heinous. I agree with the mayor. And I don't wanna see one person taint the reputation of our first responders, our heroes that are willing to risk their lives, like Alderman Massey said in the middle of the night, go out on hundreds of calls every year to protect our community, they'll run into your house if it's burning. I don't want one person to try to taint that reputation, because these are our heroes. So I agree with Alderman Massey and the mayor as well.
Alderman Green?
Thank you. Yeah, I will echo all the sentiments. You know, Mayor, you called it a punch in the gut, and I believe that's exactly what I saw from social media. For groups to paint Middletown on the actions of one person is completely unfair, is not looking at all of the wonderful volunteers, our paid fire staff, all of our other city departments and employees, and just what this city really is. Alderman Massey, it is a black eye on, you know, a wonderful fire department. Alderman Kleiner, I'm sure can correct me if I'm incorrect, but 160-year-old department this year, so, you know, certainly a rich history, and I'm very happy to know many of the fine men and women who we do have with our fire department. You know, and again, thank you to them for, you know, continuing to work for all of us during this time, and especially in some of the harsher weather conditions. And in that, I will say that DPW, I did drive by Highland Avenue coming home from work the evening that the first break occurred, and I have the utmost respect for those men and women of your department who are out there working on that, because I was freezing with the heat on in my car, and they're out there with water spraying all over them, and, you know, certainly working to lessen the burden on our residents. So we certainly appreciate all the work that's done, and, you know, chin up, and we're gonna keep pushing forward, and that's what we do. So I will conclude there. Thank you very much.
Alderman Johnson?
The beat goes on. So as far as DPW, I certainly wanna express my appreciation as well. Third Ward has Monhegan Mobile next to our homes, and a frequent flyer there. And one morning after one of those nights, I met one of our employees from that department coming off shift, and I just looked at him, and he just said, "It was brutal." So it's a tough job, when you're in single digits or sub-zero, and you might get wet at the same time, it makes it a lot tougher job. So we thank all of them for what they do. I know they're supposed to do it, but sometimes it's harder days than others. With respect to our issue of the day, so there's one individual, there are two issues, I think, one's trust and one's expectations. So this particular individual, if found guilty of the allegations, he managed to fail a lot of a lot of people. He failed his family. He failed his coworkers. He failed the members of this community. He failed his council. And there's two failures there. There's psychoemotional failure, because he did not meet our trust and expectation. And there might also be people who died because of what he decided to do to earn a few extra bucks. Enough said on that. Middletown's strong. We got way more good than bad. We got way, way more good people than bad people, and that's become the phrase of the last decade, right? When communities meet a challenge and try to move forward. So let's be Middletown's strong. Thank you for your time.
Alderman Cassoon?
Good evening. I always dislike having to follow Alderman Johnson, always very eloquent in saying everything I already am thinking, but yeah, this morning was a blow, and I know so many members of our fire department, both paid and volunteer personally, and they are honorable, honest, hard-working, generous people. And I too spent some time on social media today, and with the help of some news reporting agencies who are pretty careless with the way this was presented, they encompassed our entire department in this one individual's reprehensible behavior. And on behalf of myself, and I'm sure everyone in this room, I'd like to say to our members of our fire department that we stand behind you, and we know who you are, and, you know, we're proud of what you do for this community every day. And this tarnishes us, sure, but again, one individual, one person, this is not our department, this is not our city. And, you know, we speak to that, we speak to everyone who responds when we are in need, whether it be our police, our fire, our DPW. The men and women who work for this city, who come to our aid for everything that we need, are without a doubt the most outstanding individuals I have met. And that is true across the board. And when they are standing in a hole full of water at minus five degrees, which I have seen happen a couple of years ago across the street from my home, and have delivered them hot chocolate numbers of times, because I just don't know how they do these jobs, and the police and the way that I've seen them be treated, who continue to keep their cool and are professional and giving to our community, and I think that we need to, if you see these people, please, especially in a time like this, where one person's actions allow, you know, the mob mentality to take over, and we're gonna attack, and we're gonna vilify a city, take the time, because I think those who live with honor every day are suffering right now. And if you see a firefighter, a police officer, whatever, can you just say thank you for that, to them, for doing what they do, so that we can continue our lives without fear, without interruption in our services, and all the things that we enjoy here in Middletown? I say thank you, I hope you all say thank you, and that's all I have tonight.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. We had a meeting of the Communications Committee tonight, and we considered a resolution of support for the green light New York, New York State driver's license for immigrants, and we're going to have Corporation Counsel Alex Smith write a resolution of support for us, and it will be presented at our next meeting, and it will be after the mayor's State of the City address on February 19th. Next Monday, February 11th, we will, at 7:00 here, Alderman Green and I will have our Second Ward constituents meeting. Regardless of the weather, we will be here. DPW Commissioner sent us pictures of what it was like for the guys out working in this sub-zero weather, and we, it's their job, but they go so far above and beyond, they answer the call every time, they're amazing, and we're, they're very much appreciated in Middletown. It's been a difficult winter, and we know we can count on them. So thank you, Commissioner, and thank you to your department. Middletown has an amazing fire department, an amazing history. They are always there, they answer the call so quickly, the fire department, the fire police, as other woman Rankassoon says. In that same kind of weather, it doesn't, and sometimes, these guys just have to stand out there in the freezing rain and in the ice and just stand there for hours, well, get the fire under control. I was very happy to hear DA Hoofler, when he was asked directly, "Are there any other members of the Middletown Fire Department involved?", and he said- members of the Middletown Fire Department involved?", and he said, "No." So clearly, this was one person, and with extremely serious allegations and reckless disregard for life if they are true. I certainly want to thank law enforcement, I want to thank the state police and the DEA and the FBI and Hoofler and everyone who saw this and went out and did something about it, and hopefully, put a huge dent in it. So, thank you to our law enforcement people. I know Sue is here tonight, so I know we've had a couple of warm days in April, on April 27th, so you can start thinking about something better, we will have our Citywide Pride Cleanup Day. So please write that date, April 27th, on your calendar, and keep it in mind, and come out and help us show Middletown pride, because that's what it's about. Now, I know people are anxious to get home and see if the Knicks can break their 13-game losing streak, so I don't want to talk too long, but I'm anxious to get home and hear Stacey Abrams give her rebuttal to the state of delusion and fantasy that will be presented. And if you want an example of that, we just had David Vernhardt appointed, nominated to replace the disgraced Ryan Zinke in the Interior Department. This is an oil lobbyist, and he will be in charge of protecting our public lands. It's, you couldn't make it up if you tried. So you may know all the best people, but this is not a, no longer a swamp, this is a cesspool, you're scraping the bottom of the barrel, and I look forward to some inspiration from Stacey Abrams tonight. Thank you.
Alderman John Francois.
Yes, good evening. My grandma always said, "There's a bad apple in every bunch." I just want everybody to stay focused. We just got to keep in mind, this is our brother, this is our sister, this is our nephews, uncles, mother, father, this is our community. Let's not let this one incident determine who we are as a community in whole. I mean, these things are going to happen over and over again. But Middletown, we're going to put this behind us and move forward, and this is what we do. This is the community that we have here. This one incident is not going to determine who we are. I mean, we're all better than that, but this is society in whole, these things happen. We got to stay focused and move forward. Thank you.
Alderman Burr.
Yeah, I agree with all my Alderman's comments. And we always have to remember, a couple of years ago, remember, Middletown was the eighth best place in the country to raise your kids. So just always remember that, that we're always looking forward and making Middletown a better place. Thank you.
New business.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois, to authorize the mayor to sign a proposal with JCO Inc. to provide management services and act as chief operator of the water treatment plant for year ending 2019.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, to accept a donation in the amount of $250 from the Middletown PBA for the Young Warriors Boxing Program.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Burr. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, to declare DPW vehicle surplus.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with CDM Smith for four professional engineering services for the water treatment plant, finished water booster station project.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, to authorize a six-month extension of the 29 to 35 North Street project contract as to their final economic development goals as set for in their contract with the city to begin January 1st, 2019, till June 30th, 2019.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Those all for new business.
Audit.
Mr. President, I move the accounts be audited, the claims be adjusted, and the city treasurer be authorized tuition warrants for their payment.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Roll.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Francois.
Aye.